Welcome to the first, ready to hear our Chamber of Commerce primary candidate debate. And thank you all for coming. I'm going to turn this over shortly to our moderator, Mike Bates. But before we do that, can I get everybody to stand up and we're going to play the anthem. It's at 7:30 a.m. here where you're sitting right now, and there'll be tables and breakfast and things like that. We're going to have the school board candidates, as well as a couple of our legislative candidates, and a nice message from Matt Bates. So if you contend and agree, tickets for the event are available online and Eventbrite, right next to where you have tickets for this, or you can go to our Facebook page. So now, let me introduce our moderator for tonight, Mike Bates from 1330 W E D Y Talk Radio, Northwest Pola Talk Radio.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for coming out this evening. My name is Mike Bates. I host a talk show on 1330 AM W E D Y Northwest Pola's Talk Radio. In fact, I was out of the air six minutes ago. Ran a rerun the second hour. So again, thank you so much for coming out tonight, and thank you to the candidates as well for coming to participate. Let me introduce my David candidates from District Two. We have Tammy Jo Brown. And from District Four, we have Dave Peach. Before we begin, I'd like to ask the audience to please reconsider it of others in the room this evening. There are five candidates here, and many supporters for each, and we all want to cheer for our candidates and want to boo our candidate opponent. I get that. But it's not really what tonight is about. What tonight is about is having the candidates discuss the issues and inform us, the electorate, of where they stand on the issues so that we as educated citizens can cast an informed vote. So we do ask that you please refrain from clapping, cheering, heckling, or any activity that is disruptive, so that we can hear from the candidates. Also, so we're not interrupted by a babysitter calling. If you have a cellphone, please set it to silent or at the very least, vibrate. We are recording the debate tonight and will post the video online the next day or two. We're also attempting to put this on Facebook Live. If you're familiar with Facebook Live, it requires one thing, well, two things, I guess. Facebook had a lot of bandwidth. So if you have your cellphone, we ask that you try not to use it during the course of the debate, because we've only got so much bandwidth in the room, and we want to dedicate as much of that as possible to Facebook Live to make it happen. So thanks to the New York Chamber and to everyone else who helped put this on this evening. Let's get to the rules of the debate. Candidates, I will ask you a series of questions. You will have 60 seconds to respond. Tracy here at the center table is the official timekeeper, and she will hold up a sign that says "time" when you have 10 seconds remaining. This is the fancy sign that she has. So at that point, please wrap up your answer. If you do go beyond the 60 seconds, I would likely jump in and try to wrap you up. But we do want you to have your say, it's just that we're going to give everybody equal time. We do have a one minute response. The first half of the debate, our questions of all five candidates, and we'll start with a different candidate each time. And the second part of the debate will be somewhat different. We'll get to that when we get to that. Questions come from several sources, including audience members, chamber members, and community leaders. Each candidate, this is something interesting, each candidate will have three 30-second rebuttals that they are permitted to do. If you have a rebuttal, raise your hand. We'll call on you when the candidate has finished speaking. And you have, as I said, only three opportunities, so use them appropriately. And once we're finished with all of that, each candidate will have a two-minute response time to make a closing statement. So are there any questions on the format? All right, well then, let's begin. Question number one, first asking of Tammy Jo Brown. Actually, I'm sorry, we needed an opening statement. I skipped the opening statement. If we could begin at the end of the table, Rob Williamson, opening statement, please, for 60 seconds, and then we will get into these specific questions.
I'd just say thank you to everybody who took the time to be out tonight and to listen to what the candidates have to say. Place my faith and confidence in the voters of Santa Rosa County, because they always do a great job of doing their homework, and they're knowledgeable of the candidates, and they know how important this precious right is that we all have as Americans, this right to vote. So I'm looking forward to tonight, and to try to get a little bit of my story out there from me, and not from some of the other avenues that it's been coming from on social media that I don't necessarily agree with. So I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Dave Peach, and I want to work for you as your District Four County Commissioner. Because these are job interviews to me. You're here to interview me, to work for you, and us as a community. I'll tell you a little bit about myself in the closing statements, but what it's about is about community, and exercising the right to vote, and having full knowledge of all the issues and how the candidates stand. I'm a retired Air Force Colonel. I'm an engineer. I've served this country proudly, and now I want to serve you in this, our community, because that's what it is, folks. It's our community, and together, we can make it better. Thank you.
I'm David Wilson. I don't hate that. God, country, and serving citizens of Santa Rosa County has been very important to me for the last 15 years. I got a Navy here, married one girl, she's sitting right back here with me after 46 years, four children, and one grandchild. It's important to me for our quality of life. It's important for me to see 20 of you out there and hear what you have to say, because it's who we work for. The day before I got sworn in, I have one loss. She's sitting here with us tonight. The day after that, I had 160,000 more. The day after, that's what's happening. You, for the people who were responsible to this time coming, are. I said I wasn't going to run for another term. Somebody who asked me to, I feel privileged in being asked. So here I am, Bob Cole, and I'm asking for your approval.
Hi, I'm Wallace Moot. My husband and I returned right in 2009. We have two children, and three grandchildren. During our time here, I got involved in trying to protect local advocates, and that is what spurred me on to keep people in willing to commission meetings, and I decided that I wanted to be part of that process. So I appreciate, I appreciate you all coming here tonight, taking the time to come and listen. And as Bob Williamson said, don't get your information from Facebook. I do have a Facebook page, and I have some brochures and information on my table. So I welcome any questions at any time. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for having us for us this evening to sit down and let everybody meet the candidates and hear our points of view. My name is Tammy Jo Brown, married to Joe Brown. Yesterday, Joe and I celebrated our 35th wedding anniversary. We have three children, nine grandchildren. I own, my husband and I own a local company that we've had in Santa Rosa County for 22 years. Four of those years here in Santa Rosa County, I mean, here in Navarre. My son, our son graduated from Navarre High School. We, I've also worked for the clerk of court for over seven years, working with attorneys and the general public, helping them to process paperwork. So I'm working with the public, general public, I know the needs, and try to help the general public meet their needs. And I'm here today, running for county commissioner, because I, you know, need to listen to the people. We need to get input. We need to have people to come to the table, although we may not always agree on everything, we should be able to come together and compromise. Thank you.
Okay. The first question will be asked of each candidate, starting with Tammy Jo Brown. What do you believe is the most important quality for a county commissioner to have, and why? 60 seconds.
The most important quality is to have open mindness, is to be able to relate to people, to be able to understand, and even if we may not agree on something, we should be able to get together and compromise, and work together for a better community. We should be able to have an open door policy, where you should be able to come in and speak with me, and like I said, we may not agree, we may not have the same decisions, but we should be able to compromise. And you, the people, have great ideas. We need to get together and talk about the great ideas, so that we can keep our county moving forward. And our boards, we're never going to, if we don't have great ideas coming in, we can't implement them. Somebody may know something better than I do to accomplish a feat, so we need to be able to have an open door policy. Thank you.
Wallace Moot, same question.
To me, the most important quality or qualities of a county commissioner would be honesty. If you're not honest with the public and with yourself, you have problems. I would also say, being a county commissioner, you have to have a willingness to be open to the public, to always be willing to talk to anybody who wants to come and talk to Openness, honesty, I think those are the, would be the two most important qualities. And also a willingness to work with the county staff, and hopefully to think outside of the box, and not continue to do things the way they have always been done. So those are the things I would be concerned about. Thank you.
Bob Cole, 60 seconds.
I would say sincere.
Let's get the microphone there.
Sincere. When your problem goes to the mic before, might need to be sincere about how we're going to apply the county's response to that problem. Maybe something small, or maybe something large, maybe vulnerable community, homeowners association, neighbors, or maybe just be yourself. But as a county commissioner, you deal with a lot of problems, a lot of different problems, and a lot of everyday responses to what's going on. But at that time, when you're at that office, your problem, your question, needs to be the most important thing on my table at that time. Communication, open door policy, returning phone calls, that's one thing I'm very proud of. A lot of people told me, "Well, I didn't really expect to hear about you being a county commissioner." When I return my calls, regardless of what's going on, I suppose it's important to make it sincere.
Set that microphone down. Next, to Dave Peach. 60 seconds.
Thanks, Mike. Integrity, doing what's right even when no one's looking. It's knowing you can sleep at night, knowing you look someone in the eye, and meant what you told them, even if it's not what they want to hear. I believe if you sit and look that person in the eye and explain all sides of the situation, and they feel your genuine concern, and they know you're being honest with them, then you can work together and move forward. One of the core values I've lived my entire life with was integrity. Do what's right when no one's looking, and always tell the truth. You may never have to worry about what you said to somebody, because the truth will always be the same. Thanks.
Rob Williamson.
Thank you. I think you've got to care about the community and the people in it. It was Roosevelt who said that people won't care how much you know until they know how much you care. But everybody cares in a campaign election year, right? We've seen every election, people go out and they run and join the chamber, and they sign up for leadership San Rosa, and they show up at ribbon cutties. But really, if you have somebody that cares about the community, there's going to be clear evidence that they cared about the community long before they ran for office. You're going to see evidence of that. Otherwise, how do you know that it's real? I don't have to worry about going and joining a bunch of organizations or showing up to put some posts on Facebook to let you know about how I care about the community, because long before I put my name on a ballot, I served for almost a decade in Santa Rosa County-specific leadership roles, and did so successfully. I persuaded and created this county by serving in leadership positions, relevant leadership positions around the county. I think that's how you know that someone cares deeply about the community and the people in it.
Okay, second question, also to all candidates, beginning with Wallace Moot. Question is, what previous work experience best qualifies you for county commissioner, and why?
I would say the work experience that qualifies me as a county commissioner is being a Navy wife. You may not think of that as a job, but if you're a husband in the military, so are you. You deal with a lot of different people in the military. It was an exciting experience that I'll never forget. And also, I have worked various jobs. I worked for 10 years at Blue Shield of Downs. And I started out as the lowest secretary, and in five years, I was in a management position. So I'm not the type of person to sit still. As I entered a job, I always knew more about the next job, and the next job. I like to investigate different things, I like to learn as much as I can about different situations. So the combination of those and volunteer opportunities have served me well. Thank you.
Okay. Dave, if you can hand the microphone to Bob Cole. Bob, same question for you.
Oh, and that's just the very first time I ran, and it's going to sound like a commercial football argument. But, you know, people say, "Well, what qualifies you to be a county commissioner?" You know, as an auto mechanic, I've been on an automobile business for over 35 years. People bring me a problem every day, drive up or have to go to the shop. Then at that point, it's my job, you go through it, figure out the solution, act with the customer with the cost, have the customer agree that that's what they want to do, and then act upon the customer's wishes. Isn't that what you want as a citizen in Santa Rosa County, for your county commissioner, to act upon your wishes, to be prudent with your dollars, on where spend, find the best cost, find the best prices for you? So I think that's one of my best qualifications. I also got a degree in industrial education, and I found it more pleasing to serve people in two capacities, one, fixing the car, and two, fixing the problems in the county. Thank you.
All right, Bob, again, that microphone back to Dave Peach. Dave, same question for us.
Thanks, sir. I would have to say my experience as a leader in our United States military. I was fortunate enough to have the honor to command our army. And a lot of folks say you handle a lot of money in the military, and it must have been a subject. But the thing that tore me the most and drove me as a leader to show concern was the resource that you all gave me, and that's your young folks, that's your sons and daughters, because I was entrusted with taking care of them and helping them with their wants and needs, and ensuring they were properly prepared for the dangerous missions that they were going to embark on. And until you look at mom and daddy and tell her, "I got your son, I'll take care of him," that is my greatest achievement, I think, is that I was able to take those resources that people entrusted to me, provide for them, keep them safe, all of the time, protecting them all in this great country and economy.
All right, then, Rob Williamson.
It's going to be similar to what I said about the other one, because, you know, my experience is important, but it's Santa Rosa County-specific leadership experience that's relevant and matters, and that's a key difference in this race. Before putting my name on a ballot, I had the opportunity to force one equity into the county by serving in these relevant leadership roles around the county. Value Adjustment Board, zoning board, school advisory councils, board of directors for leadership San Rosa and others, more than 12 leadership positions around the county that are directly related to serving as a county commissioner. And then I'm the only one in this race that has small business ownership experience. I've been a small business owner for 13 consecutive years in this county. I'm probably saying, you take home the stresses of being a small business owner, you know what it's like to make decisions and solve problems every day. That's what you want from your county commissioner. So I think experience is important, but it's relevant experience that matters.
Tammy Jo Brown.
Okay. Owning a small business in Santa Rosa County for 22 years, it's given me experience of working with public as far as doing proposals, getting them out there. Sometimes you win a bid, sometimes you don't win a bid, but just getting out there and meeting the people that need, that need, well, it's a dirt company, I have a dirt bid. So it's getting out, meeting clients, meeting customers, getting out there, making sure the job is done correctly. To, when you go out and throw a lot, if sometimes if the customer's not happy, you have to go back and, you know, you have to satisfy your customer. And that's why you'll have to work with the people to try and, you know, please, please the people. So, and also working with, at the clerk's office meeting, you know, working with the attorneys, working with the judges, working with people and their problems and their issues with like child support and divorces and family domestic relations.
Okay, question number three will be asked of all candidates, beginning with Bob Cole. Question is, impact fees on new construction generated over $3 million per year in tax revenue prior to 2009, and helped Santa Rosa County pay for the infrastructure needed to support growth. Those fees were suspended beginning in 2009. Since 2012, Santa Rosa County has seen a significant growth. Do you think we should bring the impact fees back? Why, or why not? Beginning with Bob Cole.
That fee.
That fee could, uh, hand the microphone down, please.
Impact fees did do a lot, but I learned a lot during the time we had it in place. The housing industry is one of the biggest engines in our county for bringing dollars, putting people to work. They take a hundred dollar piece of property and turn it into, or the actual alternative to property is perhaps $2,000. I use this as an example, keep numbers easy because I'm that way. That's $1,900 difference in taxes. So all those new houses are paying that much difference. You open up a subdivision, 10, 20, 30, 9, 10,000, or 30,000, look at the increase if you're having taxes. And then to add an impact fee to that, just in some ways, don't seem fair. I would consider an impact fee if the board would take a portion of the growth, subtract 100 from 2,000, you have $1,900 difference. Put that 100 in a conference where it's always been, but take part of that $1,900 and put it into an account for, for impact. And then if we do that, and we're more prudent with those dollars, I would consider impact fees. But we didn't do that in the past, and I'd like to see us do that in the future before we consider impact fees. Those dollars to be budgeted, bargained.
Time's up.
That would be great.
All right, if you can hand the microphone to Dave Peach. Dave, same question for us.
Thank you. There's no question that having construction impacts our infrastructure, our roads, and all that. We had impact fees. They helped. There is an impact to this construction. Is it a fee? Is it a dollar amount? Is it something in kind that we could work with developers? I don't know, but that's what I want to explore, because I believe they know they impact us, but we also impact them. We do need to set aside funds in order to have a capital fund to prepare our infrastructure. We do need to assess some kind of impact that this development has. It could be in trade for putting in sidewalks in the neighborhood, as opposed to not putting in sidewalks, or writing a check to someone you're not sure if they're going to spend the money appropriately. So I want to explore impact fees. I want to talk with developers. I want to talk with you all and see what you want and need, because all our wants and needs are different, but there is an impact, and we need to figure out what will help it.
Rob Williamson.
Well, if you look at social media, I'm in the pocket of developers, so obviously I would be against impact fees, right? The only problem is, two different times during my time in office, I have recommended that we look at bringing impact fees back at no more than half of the previous level, because as Bob said, I have to put words in your mouth, but, look, they are wealth creators. Developers are wealth creators, they provide a lot of jobs. But we all need to, as a community, contribute to the growth that is causing such a negative impact that we're all experiencing. And to do that, we have to make sure that we are spreading out that burden across everyone that is participating in the benefit of this growth. So I think the time for seeing what the community wants. The community wants to have infrastructure in place to support the growth that's going in at an alarming rate. I think the community's been pretty clear on that, and I think that the developers understand that. I think they'd be willing to come to the table, we just need to have the courage to move forward and do it.
Tammy Jo Brown.
Okay. The, it used to be called a transportation impact fee, and now we have the half percent sales tax. The county did not get this way overnight, so we were moving, the county's moving forward. I see it, I see a forward movement. So it's going to take time for, you know, for the infrastructure, I mean, for us to get back to where we, where we need to be. The, I just experienced the impact fee just on a personal level, right before, when the last year they were doing the impact fee, I knew a person that was moving a modular home onto a place, and it was, they received, you know, a modular home at a discounted price. The impact fee for them, on a person and not, you know, a developer, just a single person, it was too much for them, that they had to split it up into like a three month, three-year payment. So they did away with the impact fee in 2009, and, but this person still had to pay it because he set it up on a payment plan. So it's maybe something that we may need to look into for like Parks and Recreation, but I think I might just...
Time's up. Thank you. That clock keeps ticking. I don't like to interrupt, but it strikes 60 seconds, you've got to wrap it up. Wallace Moot.
Short answer, absolutely. We need impact fees. Have you noticed how much flooding is going on here in Santa Rosa County? I think you probably have. I have. I've been to almost every county commission meetings for about 12 years. I've been paying attention. Another problem is, in these areas that flood, new houses are going up two or three feet high, and what does that do to the person down here from them? How would you feel about that? If that water was going to run down into your property? We need infrastructure, folks. We need impact fees, a fair impact fee. When the old post office opened up, they were going to charge them $18,000 impact fee. She said, "I can't own my business." So they said, "Okay, 1,800. We can be fair." There was a, there would be a study done, there would have to be a study done. So how, how difficult is that? That is why they have brought the... That is why they have brought that, we have to do a study. Call us County, see what their impact fees are.
All right, thank you. Our fourth question, beginning with Dave Peach. As our county grows, we have to deal with land use issues monthly. Over 85% of all variances are approved in this county. As county commissioner, how would you handle variance and rezoning requests that you vote on?
Actually, Mike, I think the variance request are a little higher than that, than tribal, over 90%. They've been that way since the last election. And the land code exists to protect people's property, not just the property owner, but the people around in that property. And when folks purchase their property, they full well know what their land is zoned for, what, what its potential uses are. So to have that high of a variance approval rate, I know, I've talked to several landowners and business owners who purchased land on Highway 87, knowing it was in the heart of Navarre and what it was zoned for, only in September and is most recently a few months ago, to have conditional approvals accomplished, then are now putting storage lockers next to their properties that they're trying to make presentable because they knew they were in the heart of Navarre. So the variance request require extreme hardship. I would ask us all to look at that extreme hardship very particularly before we just approve a variance.
Rob Williamson.
Well, I'm glad to hear that there's folks at the table that agree with what we've already been implementing, and the reason that we know that variance requests were approved at 86% is because when I came into office, I asked the staff to evaluate it so we would know what those variance request approval rates are. And then once you know the answer to the problem, then you have to actually come up with a strategy to solve it. And that's why I led the effort to bring the first ever District Four master plan to District Four, to where the community could decide what the future of development will look like. And so we can protect the land development code and not have these high variance rate approvals. So that master plan is about to be completed, and it should provide integrity to the land development code, and it should make it more difficult for politicians and even volunteer, very hardworking volunteer zoning board members to go against the will of the community after they've clearly said what type of development they want and what type of development they don't want.
Candy Jo Brown.
The variance rate is in the, you know, especially in the past four years, I'd say at, an astronomically high rate. And last year, and this, this is, this is an example, last year we had somebody come in that wanted a variance to move a swimming pool 25 feet in another direction because it was put in the wrong place. And the person that got up there and spoke about it says, "I was told just to come up here that this board approves everything." And, I mean, it was, it was denied, which was great, because variance are for hardships. It's not, you're not supposed to approve a variance on a person's emotions. We get, have people that come up there are for and against, mainly this one will be, you don't have people come up there that's against a variance or rezoning change. And we need not to base our decisions on people's emotions. We need to base it upon what is good for the community and our land development code that's in place. Thank you.
Wallace Muhid.
We have an existing land development code. I've read it through a few times. So why, why would we spend a lot of time making land development codes for the comprehensive plan and then ignore it? It makes no sense. Uh, yes, these variances, like Mike Terry Johnson, they are for hardships. If you can't have a swimming pool because the land development code does not provide the, the facts or, or whatever it is that you think you, you should be entitled to, having, not being able to have a swimming pool is not a disparity. So, yes, variance rate too high.
And Bob Cole.
You're getting trained now. Everybody out there has got your right as property owner to ask for variance or ask for zoning change. That's survival of the land. You know, you bought it, maybe things around you change, maybe your conditions change, but that doesn't mean you're automatically gonna get it changed and whoever said you got it, you got it changed everything, it's very wrong. I get ate one time on Woodbine Road, man came to us and he wanted to change his property from agricultural to business. Citizens lived behind there rubbing arms. They came to the board meeting in numbers, we did not change it. So the next day, since it was agricultural, he fessed it off and put pigs and goats on it. Next day, those same citizens were in there saying, "Please allow that man to have a growth plan." Please change it. That's why God give us all brain because we don't just stick with one plan. We have a brain in our head, and God said, "I've been, make a good decision on this. After it goes through a board of all peers, you guys make a decision on this whether it's good or bad."
All right, the fifth question tonight, beginning with Rob Williamson. What should happen to the old courthouse once, what should happen to the old courthouse once the new one is open? And how would we pay for it?
In one minute. Right? Uh, sure. Well, I guess the good news is, we're talking about the old courthouse, and that means that after 20 years of talking about it, we're actually gonna build a new courthouse. So that, that, that must be a good problem to have. Look, I, I think that I've heard some great ideas about what to do with the old courthouse. I've heard use it as a, a revoked site for UWS so they can put an incubator, or they can put something in there. I've heard use it as a museum, I've heard use it as other options. The main thing for me is that whatever is put there helps create a vibrant, thriving downtown urban environment because it seems as though the city of Milton has lost their way a little bit lately and that they're not focusing on the things that would build a thriving urban downtown. And the city of Milton area is beautiful. That downtown area, it's just an area that has so much potential. So whatever we ultimately end up doing with the old courthouse, I hope that it will tie into an overall plan of success.
Candy Jo Brown.
I, I agree with Mr. Williamson as far as, as an idea is to donate it to a local college, let them have an offsite campus there. We will bring, we will bring the younger people to the community down there. And, but I just, I don't agree with the Milton. I do see Milton moving forward. It's, it's slowly, just like the county's moving slowly, but I do see forward motion in the city. They are doing new things, they've got new people on the boards, and it's, and it's moving forward in the city of Milton. We've got a beautiful river there that we can use the access, it's, it hasn't been used, but there are a lot of things that we can do once the courthouse moves and the attorneys move. These buildings, we can bring in like a pottery, a pottery place where there, people making pottery dishes, and we have people that are coming from down here up there shopping in, in the local areas.
Wallace Muhid.
Actually, I'd love to see the old courthouse as condominiums. It may take some, bringing in new businesses into the downtown Milton areas. I mean, I could see condominiums with activities near the waterfront, people riding bikes, boating, kayaking, where you love to live, suppose that, that wonderful river environment. The only problem is, the courthouse is very old and probably, probably lead and all those good things that we used to, to live in. A major hurdle there would be adding that building up to code, but I would think there would be plenty of grants out there. We'll, we'll use somebody else's money, and not the money out of your pockets, to try to create a downtown area that would be wonderful for people who would want to live in private Milton.
Bob Cole.
Thank you. I've been living with this for 15 years now, and I'm pleasantly glad to see us building a new courthouse in a good location that people on the south can get to friendly, through Almont Boulevard and New 4 Lane Road. But the biggest thing is, what are we gonna do? Let's bring two other buildings into view. Probation and the public defender, public defender's office is in an old building that should be on the historic register, and it should be in private ownership and back on the tax bills. Probation, an old gas station, we barely get by in, we have people urinating on the ground behind it, nowhere to go. The city of Milton is pleading with board commissioners to do something about probation. My idea is, as quick as we can get out of the old courthouse, we put probation, we put the local courts in the downstairs of that. We spend a lot of money every month on archiving material. The upstairs of that building, we use archive that material when we get out of that rent. That would be the immediate need, or the immediate use of the building, this abandoned building. And then the long-term use, I think, would be ideally college campuses, and that would give us some leeway to free up those other buildings.
Dave Peach.
I started jury duty in that building back in October, and I can say, by professional engineering opinion, that building will be very, very costly to do anything with. The city of Milton has a government, they elect their officials. I don't think the county should be reaching into the city of Milton and telling them what to do. I think we should offer them or afford them an opportunity to give us some input on what they'd like to see with the courthouse. But I can tell you, lead, asbestos, ADA compliance, and structural integrity are gonna cost a lot for that building. There's a historic piece of it, maybe we need to talk to the historic folks and see if they wanna take it on and work with the grants. But I think the county needs to get out of the land business as much as we can, and if we could help Milton with their downtown and their choice as their own government, then I think we need to explore those options before we spend any more taxpayer dollars to renovate a facility that's way past issues.
Our sixth question tonight, beginning with Candy Jo Brown. Do you support adding another half cent local option sales tax? If yes, how would you propose to spend that additional revenue?
Um, not this time. I'm not for adding on that half percent sales tax. I still think that we, we need to, the county needs to, to move ahead a little bit forward. I know that, you know, Mobile County, their tax rate starts out at 4%, but if Alabama's sales tax is at 4%, but they are all the way at 8, 9, and 10% in Mobile County, and they tax 4% on their groceries, so the state of Florida does not have tax on groceries. But right now, at this moment, I'm, I'm not for adding on that half percent sales tax.
Wallace Muhid.
I would, I would also be against the other extra sales tax. There are other ways to find money. FDOT has a problem, has a, a program that you, you can get a grant from FDOT for infrastructure. So if, if we can look to other avenues for funding, I, I think that would be the best thing for us to do at this time. We are taxed enough. We have stormwater issues, we hold the grants to pull back. Some places have a stormwater tax fee, and I, I would not agree with a tax fee. We should be able to handle our infrastructure and look outside the box and look at different programs that are available for counties to improve their infrastructure. So no, one half cent sales tax.
Bob Cole, same question, to people that might know a little bit closer, 60 seconds, please.
Thank you. That's not up to me, that's up to you. I'm only one vote. Silstaski's voting on our citizens. But it is up to me to do, and board commissioners will do a good job with a half cent, you blessed this county that already, i.e. the new sheriff's cops. More work on range, more work on roads, more work on infrastructure, more work on recreation. Those are the things you're seeing right now happen with your half cent, if you've been kind enough to allow us to use. If we use it and do it great, if we apply grants to it, if we leverage those dollars, if we prove to you as citizens that we're being pruned with that half cent, and I hope that you'll come back and ask that we move that to a 4.17 for 10 years. But it's not up to me, it's up to you.
Dave Peach.
It is up to you, it's you the voters. And before I vote for it as a citizen, I would analyze exactly where we're spending our lost now. I think our loss committee's doing a fantastic job. If you haven't watched, the LOST committee made up of citizens that determine and recommend projects to board county commissioners for approval, you should. That's your half cent. You can have input in that. It's doing well, it's helping our sheriff. Crime is down 20% thanks to the citizens approving lost and equipping misforces. We're seeing infrastructure projects funded by LOST. That's you, you're doing that. So what I would support is if the community desires more services and more infrastructure and they trust us with spending their precious dollars, then I would put it up for them to vote, but I would guarantee them that there was some clear transparency with anybody who's...
And Rob Williamson.
Thank you. The local option sales tax so far has had a tremendous impact. We would not have been able to bring about the benefit that we've won about in some areas like capital for the sheriff or infrastructure improvements, parks and rec, without that additional revenue. And trust has been built over the last few years. You know, for us to continue to invest in law enforcement, fire, to give them what they need, fire departments, parks and rec, to continue to improve youth athletic facilities and add additional green space if people are wanting to have public works department, continuing to get the infrastructure that they need to continue delivering relief and catching up on the infrastructure that has been neglected for so long, we're going to have to have a revenue source. And this revenue source has 30% of the money coming from visitors outside of San Rosa County. So it's the best, worst option, all taxes being bad, this is the best, worst option that we have on the table. And, you know, it's been, it's been a success, and District Four has experienced quite a bit of that success. It's received the most of the local option sales tax money, and it's really made an impact.
Our seventh question, beginning with Wallace Muhid. Did you support the most recent fee simple title legislation for Navarre Beach? If you did, why? If you did, why not?
Absolutely, yes, I, I would support that. I, I think there are too many charges already levied on the, the people out on the beach. Fee simple title gives them some financial relief. It, I know if you live on the beach, it's gonna cost you a little beach, but at the beach, you, you have extra expenses if you, if you rent your property out, you have to, you have to pay some money on that. So yes, I, I would support fee simple title.
Bob Cole.
Well, the folks are here tonight for the Leesowners Association, about, for me, I'm the commissioner of the, of the Gates out there. And I'm looking forward to the day it's not Leesowners Association, but Landowners Association because that's what it should be. I could not ever meet with Senator Nelson, I met with his staff, tried to get him over the home, never could do it, I tried. Had promises from staff, a meeting from Nelson, just never did happen, he went down to the point, he held tight on the pass, the pass has to be part of, pass has nothing to do with whether or not you own the property that you live on. We need to have that as a separate discussion, certainly if you don't have title of your property. And basically, why did he include the pass? If the federal government doesn't want that pass built, it's not getting built. Has nothing to do with whether or not you own the piece of property that you live on, no longer have that piece hanging on there.
Dave Peach. Dave Peach.
I support V simple title, but I don't support the language that was put forth in the V simple title bill. Because the language was different than in Scamia County. And some say it changed. There's conservation recreation land that's been in perpetuity out there on the island. I believe it's two hundred and fifty-four acres, correct me if I'm wrong. And that land needs to stay, conservation recreation, because that's what Navar and Navar Beach is about. Our beautiful pristine beaches are dunes. There's plenty of land out on the beach that's zoned and ready for development. But if we slowly chug away at those precious two hundred and fifty-four acres, I don't wanna live in Des Moines. I bought my home here in Navar because Navar is what that beach is. And that land needs to stay. And V simple title needs to be granted to those owners. And the beaches need to be preserved as the people's beaches, whether that means the customary use or how the plots are determined for those leases, for those titles. That's what I believe can serve our beaches.
Rob Williamson.
Thank you. The question was related to V simple. It's a simple problem to solve. You give people ownership of their land so that they're no longer double taxed. It's pretty straightforward. The only thing that keeps that from happening is when the federal government comes in and wants to tell us how we're going to use our land and they start mixing up a tax bill with a land use bill. And I don't think that the federal government should be coming into San Rosa County and telling us how we should use our property. And I think that the board of county commissioners has done a very good job of maintaining the integrity of the Navar Beach master plan. I know myself, I've never taken a vote, nor would I take a vote that is not consistent within Navar Beach master plan. It's a land use issue that is messing all of this up. And I just don't think that the sovereignty of San Rosa County should be given away to the federal government. We need to control what we do with our own property and give people on the land and on the beach title to their property.
Tammy Jo Brown.
I agree with the land V simple. People that live on the beach should have title to their own pieces of property. And like Rob said, the government shouldn't be getting into their business and telling them how that it can be used. They need to stay in San Rosas County. But the, like, the land that is out there, Mr. Peach was talking about the two hundred and fifty acres out there, they shouldn't be telling us how to use that and what to do with it. It needs to be safe and needs to be protected.
Our eighth question of the evening, beginning with Bob Cole, that asked them all. A recent economic development plan was presented to the board of county commissioners that identified aviation and support services, distribution and logistics, health services, medical research and medical technology, business services, and agriculture and marine research as top target industries for San Rosa County. What is your plan to improve infrastructure and transportation, two areas identified as our weakest in this report, to better attract these targeted industries?
We're already moving forward on that. I think Shannon O'Leary's doing a great job marketing our property, adding the properties certified, of course, it was important and people want to first. We continue to ask down the assy, try to get grant money, improve the infrastructure in those parks, looking at B D funding and improve the infrastructure department. Because a lot of these people that come here, they wanna see something. They wanna see a road in the industrial park. They wanna see the infrastructure in place. And hopefully, they wanna see some buildings up there. As our biggest aim right now is not having a silting, building a warehouse that we offer something to them again. I have been successful with the local commissioners, other board members. We are currently entertaining the possibility of putting a state college campus in the I-ten party. We lack creative jobs, only a few, but that will give people in this area the ability to get an education and start things happening.
Dave Peach.
We need to look at infrastructure as a whole, because it's not just infrastructure. It's gonna stimulate economic development. It's quality of life, it's quality of place, and all that plays in. We need to get our hands around our entire infrastructure burden. There's storm drains and ditches that we don't know we own. There's roads that are being repaid that probably shouldn't need to be repaid before others. And we have all these sources of funds that you're entrusted to our government, LOST general funds. We need to combine our infrastructure requirements by looking at what would be the true economic development. Where are our big housing developments going? Where's the school board looking to put new schools in? Because companies that are looking to grow here in San Rosa County are looking at the industrial parks and infrastructure, but they're also looking at the quality of life so they can attract the quality workforce that wants to live here, stay here, and live, work, and play in the land. So we need to look at it all inclusive in order to stimulate our economic development.
Rob Williamson.
One of the campaign proposals I made four years ago was that regardless of how you felt about the poll and purchase, we need to make incremental improvements to that property to make it more marketable. So in the very first legislative session, which I was county commissioner, I recommended to the board that we pursue making improvements to infrastructure of that site. We made a one million dollar request to the legislature and that project is just finished up now, putting in infrastructure improvements to that I-ten industrial park. And next, we'd like to go ahead with a spec building program to where we could get more awareness, we could get more people coming in here and looking at that property. Because however you feel about it, we now own it, we need to market it, we need to put people in there. The other element was strategic planning. If you wanted to know what the plan was for economic development four years ago, good luck finding it, because we didn't have one. Now, for the first time, we have a strategic plan for economic development. We can start aligning the different facets of infrastructure and making sure that they line up with that strategic plan and with the improvements to quality of place that we need.
Tammy Jo Brown.
Okay. The industrial parks, we do need to get, we have the Economic Development Board. We've got one that, one of the, on the Economic Development Board brings people in here to purchase land. And then we have another person that's there that, for buildings that are already here to get people in here into the local buildings. Think that the Economic Development Board and maybe pair up with some of the other boards, like your tourist development board, get together and present to people that are looking to come to our area, you know, what we have to offer as far as tourist development so that while you're having a company come, we're going to show them what else we have to offer besides just a building. Families come with new developments. We, they need to know before they move, why am I gonna move there? What do they have to offer me? Schools, recreation, all that, you know, churches, everything that people come to a new community for.
Wallace Muhout.
Can you please repeat the question?
Very lengthy question, to be honest. A recent economic development plan was presented to the board of county commissioners that identified aviation and support services, distribution and logistics, health services and research and medical technology, business services, and agriculture and marine research as top target industries for San Rosa County. What is your plan to improve infrastructure and transportation, two areas identified as our weakest in this report, to better attract these target industries?
I would say to target the weakest parts of this report, we have got to focus on existing businesses also. They're already here. We need to improve infrastructure to help support those businesses. So that as we target to newer, bigger companies, which we can, because of all the things, the aquatic, the medical, we are close to military, we could get military contracts, but you have to have infrastructure. If there is a building out there in the industrial park and you can offer it to someone, first, you have to have the infrastructure. You have to have that support for any business that comes in. So, yes. So, and also transportation. We had, oh, like, transportation a few years ago. It would have cost two thousand dollars a month to continue it. Six hundred people were writing for jobs of education, running that.
All right. So the second part of this evening's forum will not ask the same question of every candidate. They will be specific to candidates in the race. So, District Four candidates, Dave Peach and Rob Williamson. Beginning with Dave Peach. What is your plan to resolve the ongoing drainage and water issues related to Holly by the Sea?
Well, we know Holly by the Sea has drainage issues. In fact, I believe we paid Masterville down to four hundred thousand dollars to study those drainage issues for us. And they were nice enough to give us a priority list of projects that we need to accomplish. Last year, we had the opportunity to tackle one of the biggest projects, the Tom King Bay project, six point eight million dollars. My opponent deemed that was too much money for the south part of the county to have from the rest of the county. So he took that project off the list. How do the people who live in Tom King's Bay feel? I've talked to folks up north. I've asked them, do you think that was too much money because someone sold them from flooding? And they said, no, because we'd like to think the south part of the county would help us out if we had big projects like that. So we study things tremendously and we pay good money to study that. The hardest part of studies and plans is executing them. I would execute the plans we spent resources on.
Rob Williamson.
Thank you. I remember in two thousand fourteen, when I was campaigning outdoors, and it was after one of the biggest flood events in this county's history, and I met people that had all their belongings sacked in the street. And after that event happened, we had an explosion coming out of the county and we spent four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars on stormwater drains countywide. And my predecessor moved forward with that initiative for the study that we were talking We had zero projects when I took office, zero projects for stormwater drainage improvement in District Four, and spent less than a half a million. This year, we have twelve projects in process for stormwater drainage improvement and will spend over seven million. And the Tom King Bay project that you referenced, get your facts straight. We are currently spending almost a half a million dollars and we have begun the engineering for the design on that project. So when it's time to look at the construction, when the design is finished, then we'll look at allocating those funds at that time. But we need to make sure that we're putting out accurate information.
Dave, you've got thirty seconds. Have you raised your hand?
Did my opponent say that six point eight million dollars was too much money to spend on the Tom King's Bay project and remove it from the list? That is the fact that I stated. Did you say that, sir?
All right. The tenth question goes to the incumbents in the race, so that would be Rob Williamson and Bob Cole. Same question to each, beginning with Rob Williamson. What accomplishment are you most proud of from your service as county commissioner over the last forty years and why?
It's not sexy, it's not glamorous, but I would probably say the improvements we've made to the budget and the fiscal accountability of the county. Our budget process starts early, it's more open and transparent than it's ever been. We publish the check register every two weeks. We now have every single line item in the budget for every single department listed and it puts in there how much money they're requesting and what they're gonna be spending on. And the results are that we've won the first ever distinguished budget award in this county's history for fiscal reporting. I think it's important the way that we take care of, are entrusted with, people's money. And so to me, that's probably not one that a lot of folks put up there. It's not one that you're gonna have a golden shovel and stand there and have a great photo op on. But as far as the blocking and tackling of how taxpayers' money is allocated and how it's recorded, that's pretty important.
Bob Cole, same question. What accomplishment are you most proud of from your service as county commissioner over the past four years and why?
Can't say that I'm proud of making particular projects because we all work as a team. As a team, we've put a lot of things together for our county. Put a lot of things together for our county. As a team. And that pays for, perhaps that's the biggest accomplishment, is continuing to work as a team as an effort to move San Rosa County forward. We can look at individual things. Congressman Miller, as a naive young commissioner, said, you're it, I mean, twenty-three million dollars, grab a little more. I got fourteen and a half million dollars out of, I don't count my quarter. That was a start. I saved recreation funds and built the Jew makes arena, cash money, and more money for some leechers and stuff crap up. So, several things like that. Working with our citizens to reneural our beach. So how do you pick an individual item out of that? And I think continuing to work as a team is most important.
All right. Our next question is for the two District Four candidates, Rob Williamson and Dave Peach, beginning with Rob Williamson. Question is this. Highway ninety-eight is a constant source of frustration for a large portion of the county's population. What is your plan for reducing the long traffic delays and improving safety on Highway ninety-eight?
Forty-five thousand meters drives toward Navar on their way to Herbert Field in Oakliss County every day. First meeting I ever had as elected official was with Sean Ward, our transportation planner. First meeting with the county staff, or I should say, first meeting I had was with the MLI State Board. But I also asked somebody to come with me that many of you know, and that's Ralph Haggin. And the total purpose of that meeting was to discuss what are the viable improvements that we could bring to safety and reduce the traffic congestion on Highway ninety-eight? And I said, I'm out working on it. The community access road was a long talked about idea when I came in office. Now the feasibility study for that project is funded and it's underway. The feasibility study for widening of Highway ninety-eight is funded and it's underway. We have applied to get grant funding from the federal government and we are now working on partnering with the base, see about the possibility of defense access road funding. And we also got the lights timed and synchronized on Highway ninety-eight. We are doing everything we possibly can to bring relief to that roadway. But it's, and I'll take a thirty-second extension upon, take one of mine. I'd also like to mention that we worked, partnered with Herbert Field with Senator Broxen, with the Department of Transportation to get the strategic intermodal systems designation, a statewide designation that allows us to compete for state funding with the Orlandos and Miami Daves of the world to help bring relief to Highway ninety-eight sooner. Probably took at least four or five years off the project.
Dave Peach.
I was happy to see you over, pursued the CIST designation. I talked to current board and they were pleased that they got the support they did from the local community to pursue that option. Highway ninety-eight F dot is widening. We need to be in the loop with F dot. But in the meantime, if we've timed the lights on Highway ninety-eight, then we need to get a new watch. I just broke it yesterday and I got stopped by every single light on Highway ninety-eight. And I do the same thing. So whatever it is we're doing, doesn't appear to be working. I know the Alabama Florida TPO is working on a light timing thing, but we need to push that harder. We have reps on that board. We need to be standing up and telling them, this is impacting, this is killing people. Four people have died on Highway ninety-eight between January and April thirtieth issue. That's four of them. If light timing costs three hundred thousand dollars, that's a cheap price to pay as opposed to paying for four lives. So I would work with the TPO. I would do everything within our power to extend turn lanes and work the traffic and work the lighting, because it's not working whatever we're doing.
Our next question is for the District Two candidates. Question is- Question is, "Do you support the widening of Highway 90 through the sort of downtown of Milton? If yes, why? If no, what alternative do you support?" And we begin with Wallace.
I would have to say it doesn't matter. I support the Corleone through Milton. FDOT have been doing this study for years. I'd always thought it would be great to have the southern bypasses and leave downtown alone. But if that's to happen, you'd have to go through four or four wards, and that's very expensive. If you could even get the permits up. So it's not up to me, not up to you. They'll listen to you. They'll take all the opinions and let you have your setting. But at the end of the day, it's their bottom line. So, they're going to put the four lane through downtown Milton is what I expect. So we need to work on ways to work with that. Don't be sourpusses. If you give them lemons, make lemonade, and we can do it, working together.
Bob Cole? Same question.
Thank you. Listening along with place and time, I support town those sites. It's up to the citizens. What I hear from the citizens is that there's other options. I'm kind of disappointed with DOT and want exploring other options. We've got the 87 North South Connector. Our responsibility is that DOT would say, "Put a four lane through downtown." Without first exploring that option, without seeing how many lives could be saved, how much traffic could be moved? If that connector is made from 87 South and Highway 90 up to 87 North just below Whitey Field, how much traffic will that alleviate possibly not have to go through downtown? Paul's mentioned the southern bypass. That's an idea I came up with. A one-mile bridge can create a seven-mile bypass around Milton. That has to be explored, boy. It kind of threw in the towel when it came to Fort River. So, we've got to work with the citizens. We've got to work with DOT. We've got to work with groups. We've got to realize that, again, traffic will be blocked, modified. There's some things that we can do immediately to relieve it and look at the other possibilities for it.
Terry Jo Brown?
The Department of Transportation, as far as doing the four lane, then the project is 10 years out. City of Milton dynamics can change in 10 years. I'm with Mr. Cole as far as the 87 connector that would tie into some of the industrial parks to alleviate, and that's where the traffic is coming from. We've got a prison out there and quite a few businesses out in the industrial parks. We need to get that connector road done first, and it will show that it would alleviate a lot of the traffic, because that's where people are coming. They're trying from East Milton, trying to get up to Stewart Street, whether to the schools or home out to Whitey Field, because they work out there in East Milton. If we can get that, traffic alleviated, I would like to see it to stay two lane, because four lanes of traffic, you're still going to have the same amount of traffic, whether it's four lanes or two lanes.
Next question is for the District Four candidates. Beginning with Dave Peach. Same question to both. Do you support the incorporation of Navarre? Why or why not?
What I support is that that is the voter's choice to me. And what I promise, if you elect me in office, is that should you choose to pursue incorporation, that the data that's presented before it's put on the ballot is true and accurate. The pros and cons are clearly identified. And that you know what the cost will be and the services that you would get for incorporation of Navarre. It's not up to the county to decide if Navarre should incorporate. It's up to us, the voters. But my job would be to ensure that the data is true, accurate, not skewed either way. And then when the voters make their decision, if they choose to incorporate, and as their commissioner, I will support their wishes and help them pursue incorporation. So, as a voter, I want to see the data. As your elected official, I want to ensure the data is accurate so we can all make a very well-formed decision.
Rob Williamson? As a long-time Navarre resident, I think it is, it's going to be time here soon for Navarre, given its size, to incorporate. But I think that the group that puts that forward, and I would support that, by the way. But the group that puts that forward has got to be a group that people trust. And I think that's what we ran into last time, is we weren't sure that the group that was putting that forward was a group that had the best intentions of the community at heart. So, we've got to be transparent. It's got to be a group that has the trust of the community and that has a long-time Navarre resident. My one vote, because I would just give that one vote, and I'd vote in favor of it. Is that right?
Okay. So those are my questions. I want to know your questions. Pass that microphone down, please, to Dave. I want to know what the candidates want to ask their opponents. Send this microphone to the other end of the table, please. Each candidate will have up to 30 seconds to ask a question of each opponent. There will then be up to 90 seconds to answer that. One question from each candidate to each candidate. So choose wisely. We begin with Dave Peach asking a question of Rob Williamson.
Elected officials make lots of decisions. Some good, some maybe perceived as bad. If you were given a chance to review three decisions you made, or essentially, what are your three biggest regrets, things that you've done while in office?
Well, I don't look at the review bureau a whole lot. I'm a flawed man. I'm not perfect. I don't always hit life right. I don't always hit the county commission thing right. Don't proclaim to. I pour my life into this job and don't always make every decision that people would necessarily agree with. But if you spend any time around me, it becomes pretty clear that I have a deep passion and care for this community and the people that regret. I could arm Chair Lloyd back and second-guess a bunch of stuff. But ultimately, I think that over the course of the last 40 years, we've done a lot of things that have improved the community, working together as part of a team to bring a lot of improvements to the community, a lot of things that the Navarre community's asked for for quite some time. And that's the best I can answer.
Again, you can try to suppose. Use 30 seconds, right?
I use three. So, there's nothing that you regret doing over the last 40 years for things you would change or make different? That was the question. If there's no regrets, then just say no regret.
I understand your point to do the best in my ability. Well, I appreciate your opinion. I'm good.
Thank you.
Okay. Rob Williamson, up to 30 seconds to ask a question of Dave Peach.
I'm always relieved the campaign should be about what you can do, not what the other guy or gal can't do. So, I'm wondering what your thoughts are on people that have contributed to your campaign or people that you have paid, political operatives, that have shown up on your campaign finance report, some of the things that they have said online about me, some of the fake Facebook accounts, and some of the daily attacks that have been put out there about me? What are your thoughts on that, sir?
I have not put up any Facebook page, but Dave Peach Facebook campaign page. My campaign consists of me, my wife, and two other individuals. I have not gone on those pages. I have not posted on those pages. And I have made a clear campaign statement from the get-go that says how I am going to run my campaign. I only engage on my campaign page despite some of your supporters trying to bait meetings, concern citizens in Navarre or other things. Ask me a question on my campaign page, I will answer that. I can't control what people say if they're only a campaigner. We have this little thing called the Constitution in the First Amendment that protects freedom of speech and freedom of the press. So for me to assume someone gave me a check and I can control what they want to say, goes against every bone in my body and everything I did for 27 and a half years defended that Constitution. So, no, I do not participate on those sites. I have not created those sites. And there was one instance where an individual made a comment, and they were told to stop, and they have stopped because they were on my campaign. I'd like to see the proof, if you have it.
I'll use one of my 30s. Well, the proof is your campaign finance report. You have Mike Salvato guy. You've got John Lang, who is referred to as John Lang or whatever the heck that is. That's a fake Facebook account. These are people that have contributed to your campaign. I can tell you, if somebody contributed to my campaign and was carrying on in such a manner, I would immediately denounce that, because that's not the type of campaign that we need to be running. I think people are sick of that. If you want to talk about the fact that there are truthful things that you feel that I have done wrong, we'll break those out, absolutely. But putting out that I'm having private meetings with developers, that's not a negative campaign. That's just a lie.
Dave, you've got 30 seconds. This is your final 30 seconds. Rob, you do have one 30 second rebuttal time remaining, should you wish to use it. Go ahead, Dave.
Thank you. People contribute to the campaign. In fact, 93% of the campaign funds I receive are from within this county. The other 7% are people licensed to Christmas card to or a birthday card to. But that still doesn't give me power or authority to control what they say. If they contribute to my campaign, then they have issues, and they make statements. That's their freedom of speech. And if they defame you or lie, our Constitution provides avenues for them to be pursued. But I do not participate in that type of campaign, as I've clearly stated on my page multiple times.
Rob, you do have 30 seconds if you want it. It is your last opportunity. You forward your two-minute closing statement.
Got bird all I need to hear?
Okay. That being the case, please send the microphones down to this end of the table. And we would like to know, from Wallace Manu, what question do you have for Bob Cole?
Well, this question concerns our environment. We should all be very concerned about our environment, our local waters, our drinking waters. And I would like to ask Mr. Cole, why several years ago, he was eager to permit a 160-acre construction and demolition landfill on top of the aquifers for Holly, Navarre, Midway Gulf Breeze, and East Milton? If you are willing to poop in your own district, how do you, as a commissioner, react to other people's districts? Will you do the same thing?
Please send that microphone to Rob.
As far as our environment goes, on record, I made eye on these for years. I found people want to do it for our environment. I'm the commissioner that implemented tree wardens, so we protect the trees in my county. The largest form of trees were just being cut down at will, no protection whatsoever. As far as being anxious to approve zoning, I wasn't. I fought that zoning. I tried to get away around it. Zoning was put in place. The permits were pulled. We tried as a ward to fight those zonings. It would have come to no avail. The wards would have stood up for them. Being anxious to permit it was something I wasn't. It was something we had to do as a county. So, I've got living grandchildren, as I said earlier. I want them to have fresh air to breathe. I want them to have fresh water to drink, and places and trees to see. It's very important to me. As an auto mechanic, I've been for years testing emissions on cars to make sure they're running right so they don't blow air. So, containing air is something else to be worried about. These are all things that I've done all my life. I've had to, as a technician in my business. And as your commissioner, I want to continue protecting our environment because it's only what we have.
Bob Cole with the question. She's got a 30-second rebuttal, so go ahead.
Like I said before, there's always a way to stop something that is not good for your community. What exactly did you do to try to prevent this from happening, Mr. Cole?
The record should clear, we do it for it. We found out we would not win, so we had to issue a permit. We would have wasted thousands, possibly, tens of dollars of your tax money trying to fight it forward. And it wasn't the county attorney that pulled this. It was an attorney permanently hired, looked over it, studied it, came up with a recommendation. The recommendation was to issue the permit. We're going to get it anyway. All we're going to do is spend a lot of your tax money trying to prevent it. Listen to your lawyer when he tells you what to do.
Wallace, you do that more times. So, go ahead and go up to 30 seconds.
I am not referring to a few years later when he threatened a lawsuit if you did not give him the permit. I am asking, in the initial process, why would you allow that to go in one mile from the Blackwater River and on top of the potable drinking water wells and our aquifers? What did you do to try to prevent it in the initial request?
Initial request wasn't to build, initially request was to change property, give it industrial property. That's it. It never even came to the board commissioners. It came to the man in zoning board. He got approved at the planning zoning board because that was the future land use of that property. And it got approved. So, in the first place, it never came to the board commissioners. And after we found out what was going to be done, we tried to do all we can, it's all on public record, to change it.
Okay, Bob Cole, what question do you have for Kenny Jo Brown?
What do you feel that in the last four terms I've served in this county, I could have done differently, I could have done better, or I did not?
One thing that comes to mind as far as improvements, so county commissioners know when the monthly meetings are. So, to take a vacation during the time of a monthly meeting, I think, and then a vote is not present because you're not there. I think that could be an improvement. Like I said, we know when the monthly meetings, they're planned out a year in advance, and to take a vacation during that time for you to participate on the board is something that I think that could be improved on.
Rob, this is your last 30 seconds.
This is my first vote.
No, this is your third. This is your final.
This is my first.
The 30 seconds that were used answered. The thirty seconds that were used answering questions counted.
Oh, all right. Let me call the board. Anyway. All right. God, family, country. I had an opportunity to take my three grandsons, my wife to Alaska before my daughter and my son-in-law left their station. You don't get that kind of opportunity that long, that many times. A fifteen-year-old grandson got turned sixteen in Alaska. I'm in hopes that one day the three of them get together and say, remember the old day that took us to Alaska? How good a time we had? And I didn't know one person was going to have to abstain and the other person had it on, had it on there before their hearing or the zoning. So I wasn't aware that was happening. But I do.
Okay. Tammy Jo Brown, you can send the microphone down this direction. Tammy Jo Brown, what question do you have for Wallace Moot?
What are your thoughts on transparency? Do you believe that in trying to create and rally for transparency, do you believe that an invite-only meet and greet and/or turning away a newspaper to make hard decisions, hard questions? Do you think this promotes transparency?
I don't think turning away the press is a way to create transparency. I'm all for transparency. Close meetings at a meet and greet? No, absolutely not. Not a good thing. So yes, I'm all for transparency.
Wallace Moot, what question do you have for Tammy Jo Brown?
I just, I would like to ask Tammy Jo, what made her decide to run for county commissioner?
I decided to run, one, because Commissioner Cole told me four years ago that he was going to retire. You know, I wanted to give people a choice. And, you know, I believe in term limits. I believe if you become complacent sitting, you know, on a board for years and years and years, you start associating yourself with like-minded people and you're not challenging yourself with the hard questions, the hard decisions that you have to make. So, and that's one of the reasons why I decided to run.
Bob Cole, what question do you have for Wallace Moot?
Where do you come up with the term suck it up?
In reference to what? Did I say that? I'm not denying it. I probably did say it. Oh, oh. The commissioners decide and you have to suck it up. That's what I said. That's just a saying. Yes, I said it, absolutely. I'm responsible. I take full responsibility.
Tammy Jo Brown, what question do you have for Bob Cole? You asked Wallace's question. What's it? Tammy, you asked a question of Wallace's. Bob asked a question of you. Then you went back and forth. Then you asked a question of Wallace's. That was your opportunity to ask a question of mine.
Can we ask a question of ourselves?
No. But you hold up two minutes in closing and you can do whatever you want.
Bob, do you believe that the other three candidates that are running for your position are qualified to run? Yes or no, and why?
Absolutely. Every American is qualified to run for a position in office in our country, whether it be anything from Paul Gettrich to President of the United States. So I absolutely think that everybody has a right to run. Your qualification standard for yourself is not up to me to judge when you're qualified. It's up to the citizen out here that you're asking to vote for. If they decide they're qualified, then you'll sit in that office. I hope they don't feel that I'm still qualified. That's safe. I've been doing a good job. And that they'll allow me to continue doing that job. I'm not going to retire. Retire from other business. So you asked.
Okay, now get to the closing remarks, which we will simply go straight down the table, beginning with Tammy Jo Brown. This is two minutes. There are no rebuttals, so this is our closing statements. Two minutes to say whatever you want, Tammy Jo Brown, do you have anything you want to say?
Once again, I like to say that I'm in favor of term limits. I don't think our country was based on for this county commissioner job to be a lifetime job. I would like to be able to bring people to the table. And sometimes that's going to be hard. You and I may not always agree on things, but we're going to have to make compromises here for our county to run efficiently. And it's going to be hard decisions that we're going to have to make is to, you know, somebody, we need somebody that will be able to bring everybody together and, you know, work together as a team. We need to, and that's the only way this is going to work is the commissioners being a team. I remember in the past, and when we didn't have, we didn't have teamwork on the board. And for Mr. Cole was the hard end of that. I think we need to, the board needs to set aside, and I've seen a lot of improvements with the with the new elected officials, that they aren't taking their personal feelings for someone and using it to work together. They're coming to the table to work together. And I think that, you know, with the small business that I own here and rent children going to school here in this county and having a son that graduated from Navarre High School and a daughter-in-law that graduated from Gulf Breeze, I think we need to make our county more invitingable to people to come or worship and play here. We need to have jobs that are better paying. We need to have low, you know, low housing. We need to improve our transportation. She's talking.
Wallace Moot?
I've been married to my husband Howard for forty-four years. We were high school seniors. Broke up, dated other people, and ended up getting back together. And we just said, well, the heck with it. You know, we're meant to be together. We're still going strong after forty-four years. We have two children. My daughter and her husband live in Houston, but their grandma moving here. My son and his wife have three children. They live here. I love this area with my whole heart. I would never do anything to hurt any part of San Rosa County. I would always fight to do the best for San Rosa County. There's always a way to try to stop something negative from moving into your neighborhood. And I would look as hard as I could to not cause any damage here in San Rosa County. I don't want to be a politician. I don't want to be a public servant. I've already been a public servant with my work on low field protection, protecting our drinking waters. It took seven years. We started with three people and ended up being two people. I found a grant for twenty-five thousand dollars as a private citizen to look for geospatial proof that we should protect those aquifers. We found it, we got the grant. I'm working with the county. I've never been to college, but I love working with people. I don't sit still. I work hard at trying to make things better. So I would work for the people, do the right thing, and be honest. I could be a full-time commissioner.
Bob Cole?
God is great. My wife's my partner. My family's my heart. The people are all my boss. The day I did do that is the day I'll go home and I won't ask people. Until then, I'd like to ask you to vote. I might continue to work for you. We've got San Rosa County going on the right track. We've got a lot of great things happening. Too many to name in the little bit of time that I have. So I'm going to take that time and earnestly ask bravery, you want us up here? Because it's a tough job to be here, be in front of you. Appreciate you coming out. And earnestly ask for your support of your efforts.
Dave Beach?
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Your time is very valuable. Thank you, Navarre, Chamber of Commerce, and the Chamber for hosting this event. One of my heroes asked a question one night. Are you better off today than you were four years ago? It's a relevant question that which all should ask us each time an election comes around. We're all concerned about the rapid growth we're seeing here in Navarre and across the county. We're concerned about traffic. We're concerned about storm drain. Preserving our beaches, preserving our open green spaces, and worried about ensuring our families have the opportunities for the best possible quality of life. You know, there's some out there that want to take the face of our beach and turn it into something I think most of us probably don't want. That's destined. We need to preserve what we have here and make it better. You know, I believe our county employees work hard for us and they'll achieve our goals. But it's up to us to give them clear, concise, achievable goals. We need to support them in that process. I believe our school board could benefit and our schools could benefit from better communication about planning and development so we don't leave them behind or cause overcrowding. We could partner with them. I believe the five hundred animals we euthanized in our shelter in the month of June. Think we can do it better. I am proud of Sheriff Johnson in his duties. Crime is down twenty percent. His effective management, his ability to clearly define his requirements is what made that happen. That's why the board of county commissioners needs to continue to work with the sheriff because we all deserve a community that's ruled by law and order. You know, it's about getting the team focused on the goal. It's about mending relationships and getting everyone in lock in the same direction. County commissioners are held to a higher standard. I've lived those higher standards my whole career. Contency, service, excellence in all you do. I'm asking you to let me continue to serve you with the skills and the education that you all provided me. I'm asking you to vote for me on August twenty eighth. Thanks. Have a great evening and please be safe, Rob.
Rob, please.
Thank you. Thanks to the Greater Navarriary Chamber of Commerce for hosting tonight and for everybody coming out and taking your time to listen to the candidates. Thank you to the voters of San Rosa County for giving me the privilege of serving as your county commissioner for the last four years. We have built a foundation, a foundation for the future of the course of the last four years, and we've made a lot of progress together. We're not done yet. But I think that's a great question. The question that Reagan asked, when you go to the polls, it might be well if you ask yourself this question. Are you better off than you were four years ago? Our county is safer. We've invested more money in infrastructure in the last four years to pave more roads, to put in more stronger drainage ponds, to clean out more linear feet of drainage dishes and build more sidewalks than we have in any other four-year time period in our county's history. We put in more playgrounds, more beautification. We set aside thirteen million dollars to end the practice of putting treated wastewater in San Rosa Sound and the Blackwater River. We doubled tourism revenue in four years. And we're finally reinvesting tourism revenue back here in Navarre where a majority of that revenue is generated. We've leveled the playing field for small business. And we've done all of this by improving accountability and communication with your elected officials so that you can be engaged before a decision is made and not after. There is no doubt that we are better off than we were four years ago. Don't let a few paid political operatives or folks with fake Facebook accounts on Facebook or the owner of a local newspaper convince you otherwise. We are better off than we were four years ago. We're not done yet. We are working well together as a team. Things like the courthouse that we've talked about for twenty years. We're going to break ground on a new courthouse this year. I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve. I have absolutely poured everything I can into this position. And I'll continue to do so for the rest of this year and moving forward in the next term. Thank you.
So in closing, I'd like to thank the Greater Navarriary Chamber of Commerce for putting on this event. I'd like to thank all the candidates who are running for office. You know, we're blessed in this country that we have the right to vote. We have the right to choose our leaders. That's actually pretty uncommon on planet Earth. In San Rosa County, we are blessed also that we have locally owned media in this day of giant corporate conglomerates. Here in San Rosa County alone, we are blessed with the Gulf Breeze News, the Navarre Press, the South San Rosa News, all locally owned. San Rosa Press Gazette, not locally owned, but still local newspaper. Two radio stations are locally owned. News Radio sixteen twenty, FM ninety-two three, licensed to Gulf Breeze. Thank you very much.